I'm gonna start this again. Good evening, everybody. It is 6:00 PM. It is May 23rd, 2022. It is the town of Ryan Beck's regular town board meeting. And before we begin this meeting, I would like to ask for a moment of silence and remembrance of our dear clerk, John Gautier, whom we lost on Saturday, May 21st, from glialblastoma multiforme. John will sorely be missed, was an integral and really wonderful and very funny part of our town hall. So I ask for a minute of silence. Thank you. John Gautier for your service. Um. I'd like a motion for the approval of prior minutes for April 11th, 2022, April 21st, 2022, and May 9th, 2022. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Chauncey. May I have a second?
I can.
Thank you, Ed. Are there, is there any discussion or any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
By? Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you, thank you. I have a couple of announcements. We're now barreling towards our grievance day, which is May 25th. Wednesday, it is the first Wednesday following the last Tuesday of every May. It is by appointment. You can visit booknow.apointment. You go to our website and see it there. You can call the assessor's office or go to the link on the assessor's office if you'd like an appointment. Monday, May 31st is the last day to pay your county and town taxes without a penalty. We're accepting them at town hall, of course, as we always do, and we've gotten a few complaints this year from people who mailed their taxes to Buffalo. So feel free to bring them into the tax collector, who's Joan, our town clerk. Also, town will be closed on Monday, May 30th, and it's observance of Memorial Day. So we will be there as well. Does anybody else have any other announcements or? Okay, before we go into our resolution, let's do some discussion items. Brian Tam is here to talk about our skate park. Hi, Brian. Thanks for coming. We had budgeted in this year's in our 2022 budget, $60,000 towards a skate park, which we were thinking would be a temporary start for the skate park that could be parked on the asphalt between the little league field and the tennis courts. The thinking was that the components for the skate park could be parked there and then moved to their permanent home, which is an acre sort of wrapping around the southwest corner.
I can show on the map when I get.
Yay.
I'm happy to do that now. If I, can I have control? I'll share.
Yes, let me, let me, let me give you. Hold on. All right. Just give me a second. You know how.
No, I think I got it.
Okay, good.
So in the, in the master plan was approved, and I'm sorry if this is small. No one can see it.
Yeah, can you zoom in?
So this is the, the, the multi-use field that's planned. This is the existing baseball field here. This is the pavilion that's built. Bearings?
Yep.
So just this, this area to the southwest of the ball field was approved and designated as the proposed skate park. So that's my red dot there.
Show where we were going to park it temporarily. Yep.
So we were going to park it here temporarily.
Right.
There. And then the basic question is, are we going to migrate those pieces over to the new thing? Or is what we want different and not part of those constituent pieces? So jumping to the Rampage Park site. There's two basic and Brian, tell me when I'm falling off my chair here, but you can do surface mounted features, which are basically things planted on a flat surface, which is what we had talked about. So here in Rye, you can see all this stuff.
We're not, we don't see it. We don't see it, Josh.
Okay, hold on. Let me try to.
You gotta. Before we go into that, I want to give some background, which is we thought we could just park the components on the temporary field. But now we find out, and Brian and I and Josh and I spoke with Bob Wyon, our highway superintendent, we'd need $15,000 to sort of clean that lot up and level it with, with, what is it, Brian? Number seven grade pavement or something?
Yeah.
So we started thinking, isn't it silly to spend $15,000 on a permanent location? When it could be go towards a bigger portion of our final of our final master plan? And we realized we don't really have a master plan for the skate park. So.
It's just a placeholder of sorts.
Yep. So go ahead, Josh.
I think hopefully you can see this now, but, but the long and short of it is that there's these.
Click on each picture, Josh, and sort of take us through.
Okay, well, there's, there's the ramp type situations.
Go to the front where it shows the whole park in Rye. Just go back two clicks. No, no, no. The, the first image. Yeah. That's the sort of whole skate park in Rye that Rampage, the company that Brian and the, and the and the park committee or Brian and I and the town board have been talking to. So we would buy some of those components. But that's what a final component type skate park would look like with fence and on a sort of tennis court like surface. Is that fair?
Yeah, and they, that, that is probably the sport code surfacing over blacktop. That's the same thing that has, which is, which is nice and smooth. It's, you know, it's like going one step beyond blacktop. You know, it's making it really nice.
Okay, so that's skate park type one. But then this is a concrete skate park, which is what I guess we were thinking we ultimately wanted.
Yes.
So we're thinking, why are we spending $65,000 on components? If this is what we want in the end?
Originally, some of the companies I was talking to from California were, were, you know, were saying, oh, yeah, yeah, buy these pieces. And then we'll just integrate them. And it can be done, but you know, I, I would say it would be nice to have a modular half pipe like that picture right there. Because that would be, that would be outside a concrete.
The half pipe in the back, in the background of that?
Yeah, that's how, that's how it would be, even if there was, you know, if the whole place was concrete, having a half pipe.
Why wouldn't you build the half pipe in? Is it too much to go that high or?
I don't know. That's just what Dave was saying, that a lot of places will just have the half pipe on the edge. But that's.
Then this concrete surface basically becomes pump track or, you know, traversing area, right, Brian?
Yeah, like a lot of bowls and there's some, like, I mean, this is kind of just, just plain old concrete.
Go back to the one in the Bronx. There's only two, no, the second, yeah, that one. So what, after speaking with Rampage, Brian and Josh and I thought we should talk to the board and probably get them for $1,500 to $2,500 to do up to sort of I'm still COVID brain guy, so help me.
Design.
Designs, concept designs for a component skate park and a bull skate, a concrete skate park. Concrete skate park would be about eight to 10,000 square feet on our acre skate park. And we could put the half pipe or other components around it. We could fence it in. We could have grass and pollinator gardens. But also, we can do a concept plan for the the component type skate park that would sit on that acre and again be surrounded with benches and gardens. But let's have them come up with a concept and prices.
On price, yeah.
So we can know what we're talking about before we spend $15,000 preparing a space that we're never going to use. Does that sound good, guys?
Yeah, I agree with it.
Uh. Is that, did we sort of encaps, present that the right way, Brian?
I think so, yeah.
Is it, Brian, does this make sense with you as well?
Yeah, yeah, it was a really bummer when I was, you know, when the guy from Rampage was like, good, it would have to all be leveled out and resurfaced, whereas, you know, everyone I was talking to from that didn't actually see it was like, oh, yeah, no problem.
Yeah, but I also, also just in terms of a bit of self criticism, I think I was just going for result. And the reality is, is that if we want to do the right thing, we got to figure what the right thing is.
Yeah.
Need a plan. Um, let's say, let's do a resolution from the floor. Joni, I'm sorry to do this for you. This would be a resolution 2022, 138. You know what? I'll do it at the next meeting because we might have a procurement. It'll have to wait two weeks, Brian. We'll do the resolution. Three weeks, the resolution at the next meeting. I don't want to throw this on Joan, and I want to make sure we're within our procurement policy. But we'll, we'll call, I can't remember his name, Brian. Is it Dave or?
Dave.
At Rampage and find out what two concept plans would look like, one for concrete and one for components.
Email something over so you guys have it in writing and all that.
Thank you.
Yeah, and then, you know, we'll get a sketch drawing with, with quotes, so we know what we're talking about. But we know that a 10,000 square foot concrete park is about $300,000 exclusive of lighting, fencing, you know, gardens, benches, all that stuff. We don't know how much the component would be, and we don't know what the skating community prefers, do we?
Well, I mean, I think everyone was excited for the original plan that was this concrete skate park. And this was kind of, yeah, just a temporary holdover for that.
So we are expecting a concrete with some components. So, all right, okay.
But I think, I think, as, as far as talking to any of the kids, they take anything, basically, right now.
Yeah, all right. Well, sorry for this hiccup, but it makes sense to put the brakes on and do a little bit of planning before we, we do this, you know? Does everyone agree? Just pulling it down.
Yes.
Yeah, Ed, okay, good. Brian, did you go?
Who's there?
I just.
Okay, thanks, thanks for coming. Are there any other questions for us? Okay. While we're in discussion mode, I want to bring you all up to date on the multi, multipurpose turf field. Our SWIP is pretty much compiled. And there's only one hiccup, which is that the original plans before the planning board. No, let me back this up. Clark Turfield did not have the correct plans when they based their quote on us. And what they're missing is the drainage infrastructure, which consists of these three or four foot drainage pipes that are about an inch thick of plastic with holes in them that are laid down in different sizes of gravel. It's a $200,000 cost because of supplies that are a commodity now, and they're really expensive, those pipes. But what Clark is looking for for us is a verbal okay for them to go in and do a perk test. They're going to bore some holes around the field and dig some soil samples with a back loader. They'll replace the soil, but I said they didn't need to reseed it or anything. And they would do this on a verbal okay with us. While Warren, with whom we're meeting on Wednesday, is working out the final, Warren's been ill, so he'll pick it up again and do the finalize the contract with them. So they're doing this all in good faith. They're still working with us on our budget and timeline, but we could be looking at additional funds for the drainage on this field. So that's why we need to do the perk test.
To dig the hole to confirm it's required, basically.
Yes.
Yeah.
Or what it, or what is. I'm sorry?
I missed what Josh just said.
Just the point of it is, is the $200,000 is predicated on the results of the, of the hole.
I see, sure.
And Christian Pajee, our engineer, who's really wonderful to work with, by the way, is pretty confident that they can find ways to mitigate that $200,000 cost. So we need to see what we're up against.
We sure there was not a perk test done way back when? Because the.
There was a perk test done, but we need, Clark needs to do this to design the drainage system. So they need to get soil samples and.
Understood, okay.
Are you guys okay with giving them a verbal okay to go ahead and dig for soil samples?
Is there going to be a fee for doing the work?
No.
Okay, oh, great.
No. So Chauncey, you're okay? Alan?
Yeah.
Josh?
Yeah.
Ed, okay, I will, I'll let Christian, our, our engineer know that we're okay with the test. Okay, thank you. Recreation Pavilion Rentals, I think we have, here she is. Hi, Carrie.
Hi.
How are we doing?
Good.
We getting all staffed up for camp in summer?
We are there.
Fabulous.
We're in good shape.
And Josh and I went and looked at the concession stand. It's got a new ceiling and we've done a lot of work on it, and I know that we're getting an industrial tile floor laid and repainting the inside of it, so.
Yes, we're going to be in really good shape.
Yeah, thank you for all that.
Great, great news.
Yes, and you wanted to talk to us about?
Yeah, about the pavilion rentals. So because of COVID, we had stopped renting out pavilions. We were allowing the public to reserve and use the two small pavilions by the playground free of charge. But I just wanted to see if we could have a little discussion around whether we want to start allowing rentals again. That would include the two pavilions inside the pool area, not the large one, because we reserved that for camp, and also if we wanted to do anything with the new pavilion.
What's your recommendation or the rec committee's recommendation to us?
Well, I think that our concern, or at least my concern with the, the new pavilion, is that there's nothing, there's no tables or anything there. So I don't know. You know, the perk to renting it would be that there are the restrooms there, but those restrooms can also be used by anyone else in the public during that time. So I don't know if that is something that we want to pursue.
People that want to rent the new pavilion? I'm sorry, Carrie. There's people who want to rent the new pavilion as a space?
I haven't been approached about it. It was just something that, you know, we had kind of talked about in the past as a possibility.
I don't think we're ready to rent that out. I don't think it's offering anything, and they're public bathrooms. I mean, if someone wants to, I know that one of our town employees is going to get married in the field this fall, but there's no charge for that, you know, and the bathrooms are there for free. It's a wedding ceremony. The, the celebration will be elsewhere. What did we charge before COVID? Was it $25 for residents?
Yeah, we, we were charging 25 for residents, 50 for non, and a $50 deposit, which was refundable as long as they followed the rules, didn't destroy anything, and did the carry and carry out policy.
Take their own garbage.
Correct.
Were those amounts per hour or per day or?
No, so it was really just per rental. We do, we had it set up so it was flexible blocks. So someone could potentially rent for several hours for that. Although from what I'm seeing, I, I wasn't here at that time. It doesn't look like people rented for more than usually two or three hours.
Yeah, I went, when Leo was growing up, I went to kids' birthday parties there, and they were two or three hours.
Yeah.
Let's go back to that. Are you guys okay? Does that make sense?
Yes, sure.
Okay, that sounds good.
Thank you. Anything else for us?
Nope, that's it.
Okay, thank you for coming.
Great, thank you.
Sure, I'm going to go back to our regular agenda order. I would like a motion for resolution 2022, 109 for, to approve tech services for our courts. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Josh. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Chauncey. Is there any discussion or any question?
Does this have parity with our last agreement?
Yes.
Okay, and we have a July 1st deadline with it?
Yes, it, it has to be signed in June to start in July.
So there's, there's, okay. So we, as, as Warren reviewed it?
Warren's been ill. He hasn't reviewed it.
All right, so do, do we want to sit or just go?
Well, um, it's the, it's sort of the, I'm fine approving it. It's, it's close enough to our last one. The one issue I had was that we do pay them in blocks of four hours a, after the initial time, and they don't return the money, but it's the court's purview, and this is what they want. And honestly, Bosie seems to be a lot more reasonable than what we're spending. Maybe we want to look at them taking care of our town computers. I don't know.
Okay.
It's up to you guys. I put it on because they asked for it to be done by June 1st, so that it could be turned in and and, uh, start in July.
Okay.
Any other questions or or concerns? All in favor?
All right.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. It passes unanimously. I need a motion for resolution 2022, 131, signify agreement and final inspection report, allowing me.
May I, may I ask a question at this point, Elizabeth? I need to recommend two small changes. Do you want that now, or do you want it after a, a motion and a second?
We have to get it to the floor before we discuss it.
I thought so, but I wasn't sure. Okay, I'll make the motion.
Thank you. May I have a second? Thanks, Josh. Chauncey, you have two amendments to this?
Yes, there's a little bit of a backstory. We found out just literally within the last couple of days, last couple of business days anyway, I think it was either Thursday or Friday, that four of the lights on Grinnell Street in Rhine Cliff had not been changed. They have the old fixtures, not the new LED fixtures. So in order to cover that, and it was, it was an accident, actually, by the way, we found out about it, and when I let me back up just a second. I said to NIPA, I don't understand, how did this happen? And they really didn't have an answer, but they stepped up to it magnificently. They, they said, we should have done it. We will do it. There'll be no charge except for the fixtures themselves, which we'd have had to pay for in any event, but they'll, they'll come, they'll do it, they'll do the work. We'll pay only for the, the fixtures. So in order to cover that situation, and yet be able to go forward with this, I would move to make these two amendments. The first whereas clause to insert the word substantially before the word completed.
Joni, are you getting this? Okay, Chauncey's motioning for a.
So we'll just say the town substantially completed the project.
The word, a modification. Okay, that's number one. Thank you.
And then modification number two, at the very end, Joan, of the resolutions, after the words, the form attached here too, I suggest that we add, when final completion has occurred.
Is that it, Chance?
Sure.
Yeah, I'll second Chauncey's revisions. All in favor of the revisions?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Any other discussion or input on the original motion on the floor? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any against? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Joan. Thanks, Chauncey. Uh, I'd like a motion for resolution 2022, 132, approving the tax or sheary settlement for COF.
Thank you, Marshall.
Thanks, Ed. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Chauncey. Any discussion or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Thank you. I'll make the motion for resolution 2022, 133, approving Bob Wyon, our highway superintendent, to attend highway school. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Ed. Any discussions or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It passes unanimously. I will make a motion for resolution 2022, 134, a holdover for vacation time for our town clerk, Joan Winnie. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Chauncey. This, and Joan's excellent service transitioning the town hall into a new clerk and training in to deputy clerk. She hasn't been able to take vacation time in quite a long time. You guys have known what's been going on in the office. I don't want Joan to miss any of her accrued vacation time. So this is sort of superseding what is in our town handbook and allowing her vacation, vacation time to turn over. Thank you, Joan, for your
Thank you, Joan.
amazing service and, and overtime and how wonderful a job you've been doing. Hope you can take vacation soon. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously.
Who would be opposed?
I know, how, well, you, you know, people, people could use it or lose it. Woman's been putting in 60-hour weeks. And we're very grateful, Joan.
Putting up with us.
We're not so bad. Okay, I need a motion for I've seen worse. Um, I need a motion for resolution 2022, 135, approving our national, our natural resource inventory, Joshy. I'll take Josh. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Ed. I don't know if any of you have perused this. It's like a phone book.
It's a grove of data.
It is a tome. It is a trove. It is, it is relentless. It's, it's daunting, but what it is, it was a labor of love spearheaded by Vanessa Bertozzi of the village board and helped me. I still have COVID brain. Her former CAV.
David Chernak.
David Chernak and our former CAB chair, Mark.
Mark Dickson.
Yes, and many other volunteers, and it was spearheaded by Cornell Cooperative, local cooperative, and peruse it. It's online. It's really a, a deeper delve into a lot of our critical environmental areas and data to be used by the planning board and the CAB and us and anyone. It's just a tool that will live in our comprehensive plan as an addendum to our comprehensive plan or standalone. We're, we're approving it and it's there. It's there as guidance. So I want to thank everyone for working on it, and it's nice to have. It's a good tool for us. There any other? Oh, yes, Joan. Oh, yes, Joan tells us it's on our website homepage in color. Thank you. Any other comments or questions about our?
I have a question. In the very last sentence, it is the further intent of the village board to update or amend. Is that meant to be the town board?
Let's change that to town because what happened is that we borrowed a resolution that was written by Cornell specifically for the village and missed one.
Village did the same thing parallel with us.
Yeah, they spearheaded it and did it with us. Vanessa was the spear header and so they, Cornell wrote us. Yeah, Joni.
Had a hunch that it was something like that.
Yeah, okay, let's, all, all, all agreement to revising that village to town. Passes unanimously to, for the revision. All, we have a, still have a open motion on the floor for, to accept our national natural resource inventory, all in favor? I, any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you, Josh, for spearheading this and everybody else.
I, I deserve a thanks, but thank you.
You paid attention and nudged it along. Okay. I need a motion for twenty twenty-two one thirty-six grant, granting additional referral response time on the Hamlet workforce housing project at Rhinebeck application. May I have a, a motion? Thank you, may I have a second? Thank you, Josh. Just for everybody, this is granting more time to the planning board and the workforce housing committee, conservation advisory board and the county department of planning to weigh in on Carney constructions, proposed plan for eighty units of workforce housing in the town of Rhinebeck. All in favor? I, any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. I'll make a motion for resolution twenty twenty-two one thirty-seven for our preliminary abstracts payable. May I have a second? Thank you, Ed. Are there any questions or comments? All in favor? I, any opposed? Passes unanimously. And I will make a motion for resolution twenty twenty-two one thirty-eight for our capital projects abstract. May I have a second for that? Thanks, Alan. Any discussion or questions on that? All in favor? I, any opposed? So moved. I know that we still have our public hearings open on the two local laws before us. We're still taking comments on that. I believe it'll be on our next meeting agenda for a vote.
I have, I have, I have a comment about the, the solar part of that. Which is that at the moment, the current, the law, the way it was written, basically has setback rules, has pre-cutting rules, has fencing rules and also has view shed rules. And, and requires a removal plan. And then on top of that, the, there is a percentage coverage that's allowed, which, which, which I looked into. It looks like it's impractical. It's also much less than what other municipalities have done. Basically, you need to have twenty-five acres for, for a minimal size solar array that would be used for community solar or, or as a, as a generating operation. And that's, that's minimal. And, and currently we're requiring no more than twenty to twenty-five percent coverage outside the O R P, which says you can't put twenty-five acres of array into anything less than a hundred, a hundred and twenty acres. And, and that's, that, and that seems to, in my opinion, is, is overkill. And even the O R P, the way it's written, the industrial park percentage is, I think, sixty percent. And even that's a little bit excessive, in my opinion, because, you know, we got all these other rules, you know, which basically will prevent anything from being seen anyway. And I'm not, you know, I don't, I don't know why we got this thing tied up so aggressively to keep, to keep you know, it's, it's gonna keep it small, keep it invisible, keep it low, you know, we, it's
What is, is, wasn't there a logic related to F A R? And per zoning district with this thing that the, the maximum coverage was related to the F A R? The floor area ratio or the maximum lot coverage?
Coverage has to do with buildings.
Right, but I, I thought that the, the logic was that we were trying to, you can't cover the lot more than you can with a building or a solar array or whatever. Am I wrong?
Well, that's right. But the question is, do you want to have, do you want to have a solar farm or not?
Oh, yeah, no, no.
Because what we're doing is not gonna, is not gonna allow, in my opinion, for practical size.
If you've got a five acre or ten acre piece of property, you got to cover twenty percent to get you a solar community.
Yeah, I, I mean, the, look, it, it takes five acres for a megawatt of, of generation, give or take. Could be as much as ten acres. So let's call it five acres and five megawatts is a minimum. Because you've got this overhead of, of connecting to the grid. It's not like somebody putting solar panels on their roof and using it in their own home. This has got to get onto the grid. You've got to have access to the grid. And we've got, in my opinion, we've got this thing so restricted. I don't think anything's ever gonna happen.
So I think your points are well taken and you raised them at the last meeting. I think we need to talk to our planner about this.
Alright, I will. I mean, I have.
Or, you know, our attorney and our planter. I sent out an invitation today for an attorney-client meeting on Wednesday, which I hope you can all meet to talk to Warren, get him all caught up. And we can talk to, we, you know, you should why don't you reach out to Jim Levy with these concerns and see what he says? I thought he had responded after our last meeting with an inter-office communication regarding this.
I did speak to him and, and he basically, you know, he, he was going along with the path of least resistance, shall we say. Which is to say, leave the coverage percentages the way they were. Because it's, it's the least disruptive change. You know, the question is, do you want to have solar arrays or not? And in my opinion, you're not gonna get them with the coverage percentages like we have. We're, they're already gonna be invisible. I don't understand what the, but I'll talk to Jim again.
Well, yeah, he also, he had other things to say there. I'm trying to find it. I can't find it right now.
I spoke to him the other day, so it's.
I, I had to go through my emails and I'll follow you. While you're here, I, you know, I set up the attorney client at ten thirty for Warren, which he can't do, which is when he told me he can do it. Can you guys do Thursday at ten thirty with Warren? Hold on, Josh, does that work for you?
Yeah, I'm fine. It works.
That's fine.
Yeah, I can't make it. Guys, we go. I can't make it.
That's fine. We can do scheduling on email.
Okay, well, well, I can, we can. I'm sorry, I, I, it just. It's Thursday at ten thirty, is okay with everyone?
No, I can't make it.
Chauncey, can you? Alan, can you?
I can, yes.
Josh, you can.
I mean, we, we can figure this out. We can also do it online, email wise.
I think Warren has a very limited schedule because of doctor's appointments. So that, I, I just checked my email and this is coming from him and he wants to get caught up. And we have a couple of things that are very timely, like this contract with Clark, like the turning over our passenger bridge to Amtrak. So let's set it for ten thirty on Thursday.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Question, given this discussion about the solar amendments, should we ask Jim to attend part of that meeting?
If he can, yeah. Let me talk to Warren and see how he wants to handle it. Alan will reach out to Jim in the meantime. So you're proposing that we allow for bigger coverage just for community solar?
Yeah, or solar, yeah, solar park or solar.
At the end of the day, five acres is the minimum entry point, is what basically we're saying, right?
Well, what Alan's saying is that five acres is one megawatt and you can't.
Yeah, five acres is a megawatt. It's twenty-five acres is the minimum. Give or, I mean, give or take twenty percent, let's say. Twenty-five acres is the smallest array.
Sorry, twenty-five.
That will generate enough electricity to make it worthwhile to, to spend the money to connect through the grid.
So you're advocating that we have less, like a higher density of lot coverage? And what about setbacks?
I would leave the setbacks the way they are. I would leave everything else the way it is. I just get rid of the coverage number. Exempt, exempt solar arrays from the coverage number.
Well, should we cap it at a certain amount, like no more than X acres? And should we also look at, like, we can't have a twenty-five acre array on a twenty-eight acre lot. Should we have minimum lot sizes or, you know, a twenty-five acre array would be fine on a?
Yeah, I understand. My My reaction to that is, we've got, we've got setbacks. We, which by the way, already take a fair percentage of the space away. We've got view shed restrictions, we've got height restrictions, we've got fencing rules. And, and that will, in my opinion, make the thing practically invisible. So who cares how big it is?
Well, we saw how upset people got about arrays going on a barn. I mean, and, and our whole
I think they were upset. I'm sorry.
No, it makes perfect sense. The math is what the math is, that you need this much for it to be rational and to feed the grid in the right amount of way and whatever math's behind it. But how does, how does the town of Rhinebeck absorb it and where do we absorb it is the basic.
Exactly. The thing is that our land is worth more here than northern or western New York. So who's going to devote twenty-five acres to commute? And this is only for community solar? This isn't for commercial. This would have to be community, correct?
Well, that's up to us. I mean, it's, it's not viable for either at the moment.
All right, I understand that. And our driving focus when we did our solar law was micro grids that didn't it didn't.
It was power based, right? Like maximum power. Now we're talking about maximum.
Well, covered, we, we did calculate power according to coverage. Based on today, today's technology. And then, and then what we learned is that there is a, a, a formula for, you know, breaking even and people being able to make money off this so that we get solar.
All right, well, we need to look at it again.
Okay, so our, our, we're holding open our
Ten thirty on Wednesday or Thursday?
Uh, ten thirty on Thursday with Warren. That's an attorney client. But we're holding open our public comments on this until until Joan told me June twelfth and longer if we need to, right, Joni? I can't hear.
It would be June thirteenth.
June thirteenth and longer if we need to. I mean, if we make a substantial change to this law, well, we have two local laws. We will have to lay it down again and go through another public hearing if it's substantive. And this sounds like it, it could be, but we'll let Warren decide that. Okay, thank you. What's your name, Alan? The brain fog hasn't, hasn't left yet. Or I'm gonna use that as long as I possibly can.
As you get older, it'll be easier and easier to use.
Looking forward.
I don't even need it.
I'm here to tell you.
ARPA funds. I just, I know we've got this on everything. And I don't know about you guys, but I might I think I'm starting to change my point of view on this a little bit. Maybe there is a way that we could look to giving this money to people who really need it. I mean, we've only had three comments. They're all from village residents. The village has its own ARPA funds, so I'm thinking the town ARPA funds would be a, a part town expense, so they'd only be expended on, I, I don't know, but you know, if we had a thousand people, that would be five hundred dollars each, which isn't a lot. Maybe we should look into, you know, what, what do you guys think? I'm, I'm going in circles here. We've had three comments for people say, look into giving it to people in need. We have to do our town hall project anyway. Is there any way that someone can come up with a plan to find out how to give it directly to those in need or, 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 or what? I don't know. I guess we're looking for more comments from, from people, if anybody has any.
Do we, do we think that we would exhaust the ARPA funds in doing town hall?
Oh, I think, I think it, I think it'll exceed the ARPA funds. Yeah. You know, it'll, we need to renovate town hall. We need to get our staff out of the basement. We need, we need light-filled, clean-air workspaces. Sorry, there it is, everybody. And we're gonna have to pay for it.
I know it sounds cruel and I am sympathetic to people in need, but I, I, I think I would prefer we stick to the plan and do town hall.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I, I kind of agree. I mean, the only other thought that I have is, is there a way through zoning that we can provide for more areas of affordable housing, of workforce housing? I mean, that's the only thought. I don't know what other mechanism exists for us to thoughtfully and, and, and accurately, you know, dispense the money.
Well, I, I agree. I just bring it up because, you know, our county executive was looking to spend seventeen million dollars on a baseball stadium. But you know, yes, Josh, we can have zoning amendments to allow for
But that doesn't cost a lot of money.
No, it doesn't. You know, we could do something in the town of Rhinebeck that'll allows for somebody to build an accessory dwelling. I believe we have to talk to Warren about this. And additional, we could relax zoning if you're going to build affordable.
Thing about workforce housing is we do have other gateway areas that are covered by our workforce housing. Changes in the law, in addition to the, the one across from the library, the problem is getting developers to come in and do it.
Well, we only have two floating zones, though. We would have to add another floating zone.
We only have two? I thought we had.
We did two.
Okay.
We'd have to add another zone. You know, but I just raise it. It's there for comments. Will we take comments on it? We've only had three. All were, you know, for people in need. We don't know how we would find people in need. We don't know how we'd administer it.
The paradigm with the federal government has been to sending checks to everyone, but that's not what we do.
Right.
Okay, anything else? Any other new business or any comments on any non-agenda items? Or any questions from any members of the public? Okay, hearing nothing. I'd like to make a motion to a okay, hearing nothing, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Thank you, Alan. Okay, everybody, thanks for coming. We'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Bye.
Good night.
Happy Memorial Day.
Happy, yes.
No, have, go the happy. Always end on a happy.